All right.
Call meeting. The opening meeting's actually posted on the wall. Rule call.
Holly?
Here.
Buckminster?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Waracre? Lake. We have a form.
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No merit report tonight. Any merit report?
Uh, just a couple things. So we'll end up, we're gonna talk about insurance a little bit later, but we're still awaiting renewal numbers. So we can't really finalize budgets on all of our insurance yet until we get all that data, which we'll have later this week from Miller Farrell. Um, so we're probably gonna need to get a special meeting set up for September twenty-third to then finalize the insurance piece that we renew October one. Get that in place that can get incorporated into the budget. Um, and then on September thirtieth, which will be our last day, because we'll need four days of publication, um, in newspaper to have our budget hearing. So is there any preference on a date and time for any of those if we do some special meetings or conflicts with anybody?
What weeks are you looking at?
So looking at next two Mondays.
Probably come on the Monday after next.
On the thirtieth?
Mm-hmm. Probably come for the month of September first.
Twenty-third works for me.
We'd be looking at the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Thirtieth, for sure, to do budget.
Do we get overtime?
Yeah. Then Holly?
You make your own bank.
I'll bring you some popcorn. No, I, I don't need popcorn. That's okay, though. Uh, yeah, I'm good for you today.
Okay.
First thing.
All right. Well, we'll get it pulled all together and I'll contact you guys just to make sure we're in line when we get going on. So that's all I got. Chief?
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on to consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we have minutes approval September fourth, twenty twenty-four, agenda through claims approved for August seventeenth, twenty-four through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, trade report, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Over.
Six yeas?
Uh, discussion and action, final readance of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one hundred to amend section six dash three seventeen offenses discharge of fireworks and firecrackers.
All right. We'll do the final reading. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash one hundred and ordinance to amend section six dash three one seven offenses discharge of fireworks and firecrackers of the Falls City Municipal Code to provide for dates and hours fireworks and firecrackers may be discharged lit or ignited to repeal conflicting ordinances in said section to provide, to provide an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All vote.
Six yeas?
Read your business. We have a public hearing to consider an application to USDA rule development for financial assistance assistance in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars for the purchase of router equipment and fire.
All right. We're open at six oh five P M.
This is just the, uh, that's an update for our firewall routers. But it says with a, a battery backup where our licenses are up. We do. So we look through with the I T support, look through what we actually need, and this meets the needs for the P S A, redundancy and battery backup. Questions?
So figure this was a recommendation based upon the P S A audit the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, they, they did a threat assessment and they went through our, our facility and, and how we were designed. And this was one of the, the suggestions to do with the redundancy of the router and the firewall.
So ideally, we'll look at trying to chase down USDA grants. If not, we're planning to have it budgeted either way, try to get, to get it done. Well, it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, but we're at the time to renew, so it's a good time to get it all done at the same time.
Any public comment? Not, uh, me, uh, any. Number two, discussion, presentation of risk management pool by the League.
Oh, nothing. I was trying to figure out why.
Yeah, we don't have any action on that, do we? Because it's a consideration.
Okay.
Yep.
Presentation of risk management rule by the League Association of Risk Management.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Clint Simmons, forty eighty-three Northview Drive, uh, Grand Island, Nebraska. Um, I'm here to just talk to you a little bit about, um, LARM or the League Association of Risk Management. Uh, we're the insurance pool for the state of Nebraska for municipalities. Um, and we've, uh, uh, we were approached by you guys, I think, a little bit last year, and, and then we kind of ran out of time. Um, you guys had a significant claim, uh, on your public work side of things, so it kind of made it difficult, um, to get everything put together, uh, for last year. So again, we were kind of asked to, to come back this year and, and, and talk with you guys. Um, so LARM or the League Association, we, we insure approximately two hundred and twenty-five communities through the state of Nebraska. Uh, we have communities, um, the size of, um, you know, twenty twenty-five population. We go all the way, uh, to communities the size of, uh, North Platte, Scotts Bluff, Fremont, Columbus, Norfolk, Ralston. So, uh, really large communities that we insure. Um, we're not your traditional insurance company. We're a pool. Um, so you would enter into an interlocal agreement and, and do a resolution if you did opt to, uh, to move to LARM. And really what we're gonna provide quotes for you this year is on the city municipality side, not the public court side. Um, I made a recommendation both that Anthony and Megan to remain, if you got renewal with Cincinnati, they're currently insuring your public works. Um, so they're insuring your power generation, uh, all your, anything, uh, for, for sewer, um, and wastewater treatment plants and water treatment facilities. So public works, um, I would recommend you staying on that side of things, uh, with Cincinnati, because they are offering you boiler and machine, which, uh, you guys did have a significant claim a few years back, um, on one of your power gen units, and they paid for that. Um, and you would not get that coverage with us, and you probably will not get that coverage with any other, uh, insurance company. Um, so keep it as long as they'll provide it. So, uh, again, so all we're looking at is strictly on the side of, of, uh, the city side of things. So, um, that would include your general liability, errors and omissions for the, for the board, all your inland marine or your contractor's equipment, all your autos, um, inland law enforcement. So, uh, and then of course, you did get non-renewed on your work comp. We would pick up your work comp piece of that too. So, okay? Uh, if you open up, uh, your packet of information, I'd like to go through just the services that we provide. Um, so LARM is a little bit more to municipalities than just, here's your insurance policy and this, this is how much money you owe us. Um, we do provide a lot of different, um, opportunities, um, for the municipalities in the op, in, in grant opportunities. Uh, we have an armor program. So if you have a must wear, um, with your law enforcement, uh, we'll provide you, uh, a, a bulletproof vest, um, up to seven hundred dollars. Um, the, the lean-on alarm, that's something that we offer annually. So it's five hundred dollars for anything safety. Uh, could be fire extinguishers, pylons, whatever safety materials you guys need, we'll give you up to five hundred dollars annually for that. Um, we do come out, we do a complete property valuation on all your property. We'll take photographs. Um, you know, we'll get the year that it was constructed. Um, and then I give that report back to probably Anthony, or I could present it to the council too, but I know you guys have a lot of things on your plate. So typically, I'll just sit down with the city administrator and go through that. Um, cover analysis, uh, legal, uh, reviews of issues. Anytime there's a legal problem, um, we like to get our attorneys involved, although you do have a city attorney. Sometimes, uh, we'll want to reach out to special counsel, uh, for anything that may happen. Um, annual reviews, again, that would be something I would do with all your department heads. We could go through all your equipments, uh, autos, values on all of that equipment and, and automobiles, determine whether or not you really need, um, full coverage, maybe on a trailer that's, you know, uh, you got a thousand conflict collision and the trailers were twelve hundred bucks. Is it really necessary to have full coverage on something like that? And I, 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 I see those quite often and, and see that in your policy too. So that would be something we would review. Uh, the next item on the, next page is big for law enforcement. Uh, we will oft, we offer, um, all your continuing education, uh, at no cost. So we have an online, um, uh, program, um, that all your, all your credit hours for your law enforcement can go through LARM. So, uh, we have a pretty good following of, uh, loss control people in our, that were in law enforcement. So we have a real good understanding of law enforcement for you guys too. Uh, we do contract reviews, uh, work comp sites, reviews, um, and accident analysis, um, along with the, an online library. We've got about two hu, two thousand videos of different safety things that, uh, if you, and, you know, understanding you just put together a safety committee, uh, we'll provide, you know, we can provide those trainings. This is all to your municipality for absolutely no cost. This doesn't cost you anything. You do have to be, you know, you do have to join LARM and be a member. There's no membership fee or anything like that, but you do, uh, you have to have our insurance to, to get those services. So, um, so the, the couple of things that, that we're looking at as far as your municipality, um, obviously you've got non-renewed with work comp. Um, you've got some, you know, you've got a few issues that we can go through. Um, but again, we're strictly looking at the EMC side of things. So EMC is your carrier for the municipality, Cincinnati's over on the public works. So what we're quoting is, is EMC. The biggest thing for us is gonna be, um, deductibles. So currently EMC gives you a twenty-five thousand dollar wind and hail deductible. Um, last year it was per occurrence. Everything I'm seeing this year is gonna be per building. So if you have a wind or hail event and it hits ten buildings, you're gonna sustain a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar wind and hail, uh, deductible before EMC pays a dime. Um, I'm seeing this across the state. I'm working with at least a dozen communities right now trying to frantically get them proposals, um, so they don't have to have this horrible deductible that's, that's gonna take place. Unfortunately, the market right now is so bad that there really isn't any alternative in the market. Um, you know, there's, there's other carriers out there, but they're carrying those high wind and hail deductibles too. Travelers is even worse. Travelers is running a, a three percent or a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible. Um, so they're, they're even worse than what you're, you're gonna see probably from EMC. Um, I did give Anthony and Megan a, a copy of our proposal. Again, this is all your liability, your workman's comp, your property, um, inland marine and your autos. So they do have a copy of our proposal. Um, I believe your other insurance agent will provide them, uh, something on Thursday. So we'll kind of see where everything lands. But rest assured, our deductible is gonna be a lot better. Um, if you sustain a loss, right now you have a twenty-five hundred, a twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, deductible with, uh, with property. So if we had a horrible hailstorm and, you know, let's say four or five vehicles got hail damage, police cars got hail damage, uh, you had twelve buildings get hit, you had, uh, maybe a couple pieces of equipment outside that were damaged, um, you would sustain one deductible with us for all of those damages to all of those items I just named. So it's gonna cost the municipality twenty-five hundred dollars. So, um, again, I don't know exactly what EMC is gonna come in with, but you already have a twenty-five thousand wind and hail per occurrence. So I, I think you're gonna go to twenty-five, um, come Thursday, per building, per location. And then deductibles on autos on top of that, and then your inland marine. So, um, there are several levels of participation. So you can go one year with us, all the way up to three years. And I explained this to Anthony, uh, earlier, um, across the hall here. So how it'd work is if you give us, and, and I'm gonna explain on the hundred and eighty day notice, because that would be notice to go out for bid. Um, if you went one year with us, we'll give you two percent discount. If you go two years, you get a four percent discount on that premium, and then the final, uh, three-year proposal would give you a five percent discount. So it kind of depends on your comfort in, in beginning with LARM. Uh, I'd say about ninety-five percent of LARM members are participating at that three-year level, and they re-up for five percent every single year. Um, once you join LARM, rarely do we have anyone leave. Um, if they leave, it's usually a rural fire district, because we're not the most competitive there. Um, and they typically, you know, we typically have some issues usually with rural fire districts anyways. So, um, so again, if you guys decide to move with us next Monday, if that's when the decision's made, we will do an interlocal and resolution. So I'm gonna open it up for questions. Um, like I said, we're a little bit different than traditional insurance, but rest assured, you won't notice a difference with LARM as far as the way we operate and work. So.
So with the pool, I talked about that resolution and interlocal, that's what you're allowed to go into the pool, uh, so not to not have to go chase out for bid, uh, with that renewal and that action with that resolution. So you just kind of work through that, through that process. You can still do that, uh, if you were in the future with notification that goes to, if you were, were a member of LARM, to go through that process on how you do that. So you're not necessarily tied down to it, but it'd be a, another avenue to, to look at when it comes to insurance. And, um, it's a cost of balance right now with the insurance, uh, with prices and getting drops and different components. As I said, we're not gonna have even numbers completely till Thursday this week, you know, from both entities. So hopefully then we can make a decision come this next Monday with those full comparables.
If you do become a member of LARM, the nice thing is if, if you ever lose that boiler and machine, it'll be an easy transition to move the public works over to, to LARM. Uh, the other nice thing is for budgeting purposes, year after year, annually, you'll know your numbers in the first week of July. So we'll give you exactly what your costs are pending, if you bought a new car or new piece of equipment or added a new building. Um, you're gonna know exactly for budgetary purposes what your costs are gonna be for insurance come the first week of July. So that's, that's a huge advantage to our program too. So.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You bet. You bet.
Sure. Basically, I'll hold with this anyway till you get the numbers in, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Moving on to number three, discussion and action, resolution to accept and confirm infrastructure improvements for the Wilderness Falls three development of the public main and operation of the city of Oklahoma.
All right. So this would be the accepting documents for the construction of the streets. The city had a commitment with, um, Excel Development to cover half of the cost of the public improvements, um, is what we had agreed to. So I made a submittal for all of that. We went through, there's a few little pieces we were working with on some sanitary sewer line in the intersection of Abbott Street and Thirty-First. Uh, so we did a little negotiation with Excel on piece there. So we got a little deduct in place with that, but then it brings the total for the project to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, a hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents would be the city's fifty percent of that. So we're engineer, where you guys went through, they've done their sign-off, everything on it, uh, meeting, meeting the spec components, meeting all those conditions. Uh, and we've done our vetting through, you know, Trevor and myself, um, through that. So we wrote the resolution up to accept that in. They'll go on to, with that being passed, that'll go under our lane model report. Then we'll get highway allocation and funding that comes in from that, um, into the next few years, uh, once that goes onto that, uh, schedule. So any questions with any of it? I think it was estimated at two fifty, I think, two hundred and fifty K, I think initially. So came in a little bit under that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All vote.
Six yeas?
Discussion and action, authorization to execute a development loan application to the southeast Nebraska Ford and Ohio County Council to construct a residential house at sixteen twelve Fulton Street through the Rural Workforce Housing Fund as recommended by the housing board.
All right. Just to get you guys briefed up to date, uh, Lucas and I have been trying to time this to get it into the time, because these applications gotta go into C N A. So we had a housing board meeting scheduled. We've had struggles getting our forum together, last two meetings with them. So we ended up having a special meeting today at noon to get this final recommendation from them. Um, we're open to have it before, so it already been, would have been all on the agenda with their recommendation. But essentially, the housing board approved the recommendation to do option, um, three that's in our, by report to you guys, which we'll, we'll kind of discuss in more detail. Uh, Lucas, do you want to come up and talk about anything?
Uh, go through and then, I mean, go through your thing, then I can answer questions if you want.
All right. So there is a bunch of paperwork, um, in there, which is all three applications. There's a single document that I have in there, just kind of a, trying to give a quick little summary. So the property we're looking at, construction at, is sixteen twelve Fulton. Uh, that's where the Rolf House had burned down. Uh, the land bank owns that property. So land bank would be providing that, um, as equity to put the build on. We have the Rural Force Housing Fund, which we have a little over, I think it's a little over five hundred thousand. Is that right?
Ish. The city gave two hundred thousand to match a two hundred thousand. So effectively four hundred for sure for the city. And then there's one third of four hundred more thousand that we could potentially have access to. So five thirty-three maybe is kind of the idea.
So we have requirements we have to stay in. That's to, if we're doing a new home, can't, can't be sold for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, the housing board actually took kind of the plans, we, and bought a set of plans tailored to really for a building that would fit our kind of street frontage, our seventy-five foot frontage lots, uh, to get the kind of maximum space that we can get in, uh, with setbacks and these, any of those requirements. So they developed that plan. We sent this out for, for bid, uh, local, and then sent it out to send contracting, subsidiary of Southeast Nebraska Development District. So kind of numbers we came back with, um, initially, we have admitted as a two-bedroom, one-bath home on an unfinished basement. So it was built so you could finish that basement out if you wanted. And then we got a number for complete finishing it as a four-bedroom, two-bath home. So numbers wise, um, four-bedroom, two-bath, send contracting comes in a little under three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, local contractors are three eighteen seven forty-five, are actually three, about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three fifty-six, eight fifty-five. That's to do four-bedroom, two-bath, which is outside of our limits of three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we can actually submit a four-bedroom, two, two-bath application to Rural, Rural Force Housing with using local contractors. Um, but we can with send. So between the other numbers would be the unfinished basement. You got send contracting at about two hundred and eighty-three thousand, and then Jackson Construction coming in about, about three nineteen, a little under that. So those both would meet application. Uh, but then you got a two-bedroom house versus a four-bedroom house. So housing board met, they went through, they really wanted to push through local, but with the price difference, they decided to end up going around, made the recommendation to move forward with send contracting on the four-bed, two-bath. Um, they were concerned somewhat on quality. They know kind of what we're gonna get local with, with Jackson. Uh, we went through that with, Blake did quite a bit to get, uh, kind of numbers pulled together with the, with the locals for send. Send's gonna put in a little more engineered or value engineered building. You know, it's gonna be similar to something like what's constructed at Wilderness Falls. You guys have a packet in front of you, kind of pictures. They've done the houses for like Neb City and some of the others. So that's what they normally do. Send contracting was specifically really built to put in units like this. Uh, so there's a packet there, kind of shows you pictures of what they've done, um, the most recent stuff. Now, I think the white one on the cover is Neb City. I don't know where the other one is, but.
Henderson.
Henderson. That's the other city that's in with us. So. Uh, other than this, it goes to, once we do this application, it goes to C N A to get approval or for get review to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna construct a home, it's gonna cost this much, and we're gonna sell it for X dollars. Once we get it sold as a city, then that fund goes, that money, whatever income there would be, goes back into that Rural Force Housing Fund, and you kind of can go through and rinse and repeat. Um, and then spill some extra pot of money to, that we have access to, to do something else with. Now, potentially, there's not enough money to do a full four-bed, two-bath again, but there are some other options. We can do, uh, rehabs and some other pieces too, that the housing board's kind of gonna be looking at.
Trying to touch a little bit. Lucas, fresh off Falls City Edge, um, one of the directives from the housing committee, housing board was to, um, try to find local contractors as much as we could. Um, send contracting is a subsidiary of send, which you guys are a member of. And so, you know, send wanted me to, you know, reassure that they consider themselves local to help you guys go after these projects. Uh, they'll open up this bid for, for everyone, so local subcontractors, um, could bid on it as well. I think what we have going on here is we've got kind of two different, kind of, I don't know if it's clientele, but two different, um, options. One's, one's a builder that does these projects all the time, and one's a custom home builder. Um, we know in Falls City, we don't have very many custom home builders available. And, you know, one thing that was considered was, of course, we want to go local, but, um, it was, it was mentioned today in the noon meeting that they didn't feel, um, a ton of guilt by going with someone that's maybe more regional local than local local, because there's enough work out there for them. And so, um, we really, really tried to push, to try to go as local, local as we could within the zip code. Um, but at the end of the day, it, it came down to, we have to be good stewards of this money so that we can sell for what we voted for, so that we could go to the next one. Um, and hopefully we can do that with as many local subcontractors as possible. That's kind of the message they wanted me to send. So we've got a meeting on Wednesday. I sit on that board. Um, and Harris and I are on the committee that will recommend to this board. Um, and so I'm gonna send an email tonight, whatever you guys decide, to get that, to get that committee approval thing going so that we're prepared on Wednesday, because they only meet quarterly. So hopefully by Wednesday, we can get an approval, um, and we'll, we'll get a house going. Um, the land bank, um, strategically has tried to target, you know, this area that's in between Ninth Street, Twenty-first Street-ish downtown and the schools. And this falls right in our target area. Uh, many members of the housing board wanted to try to, you know, re-infigurate this neighborhood, the interior of town. Um, you know, we could build a custom home out north, but the message was, is that, um, for this project in any way in particular, the first one, um, anybody who wants to build a custom home out north can, perhaps has the means to do that anyway. And so there was also some suggestions of doing rehab homes. We have rehab homes going on right now. We don't have any, anybody building new. And so they thought the best way to use this one was to build something new in that target neighborhood to try to revitalize, um, you know, the interior neighborhoods of our, of our community. That's kind of how they came, they settled on this.
So we do have to sell this thing. So we do have to sell this thing, so, uh, we got the two-bedroom component that we could look at, but we, we're going to be asking the same dollar value pretty much to try to sell a two-bedroom versus a four-bedroom.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand dollars difference and you're getting a lot bigger house. Now, I, the, uh, the four-bedroom house, is that with a finished basement or not, I'm just reading.
Yep, so it's two-bedroom up, one bathroom up, two-car garage, two-bedroom down, one bathroom down, with a little kind of rec area down, downstairs too.
Got you, got it. So basically they're the same size, you're just finishing the basement for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you got a double car garage.
Nebraska City has already done a project, they, they built kind of in their newer kind of development neighborhood, they built a three-bedroom, two-bath upstairs with an unfinished fourth and fifth downstairs, and I think it sold for like three twenty-two maybe. They've already, eight months ago they started that, they've already done it, they've applied for another one, so they're on their, their second house. This was kind of our first try at it, so we wanted to follow the direction. Now we've kind of got a good idea of what we're going to do, so we're going to get our first project in Henderson. So Nebraska City, Henderson and Falls City are all partnering on this, um, they've all completed, Henderson's close to completing their first project. But once we get this going and we know what we're going to do, we can go out and try to pre-sell it. And then if we pre-sell it, then someone can go to the contractor, do a change order, put in their own, you know, granite countertops, custom cabinets if they want, you know, if they want to invest a little more. But we thought for this, for this neighborhood, we talked to the bank lenders, you know, what can people get afforded, uh, what can they be, you know, approved for? Talked to real estate agents, you know, if we put something in this neighborhood, what should it be? And this just kind of fits the neighborhood and the marketplace.
I think it's a great idea and we've been needing to do this for a long time, we really have.
Yeah.
And I don't remember the last time we built, we built one down there on South School, years ago.
And so the land bank will continue to try to find good investable properties within that target zone that we can have prepared for the next development.
So if, if somebody, if, if you pre-sold it, you know, if it was approved and they want to do their own change orders, do you, do you already established a, a price on it, reports ever built, like, all right, we're at three hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars? Is that today's sale, but I mean, if it went up, what about cost of runs?
So that's a funny, so this Rural Workforce Housing Program mandates that you can't sell it for more than three twenty-five. So ideally they, they want to keep it affordable in rural communities. So that's the plan.
Yeah, so contractually there'll be other pieces, this is the application to say, here's, here's where we're at, and that we're estimated here for this cost to get this footprint done, this plan, um, and then, then that'll be a full, you know, contracted piece that gets put in place.
So this is just approval, but yeah, I, so I'll make a motion that we, we do option number three. I just think it's more marketable to have a house that's done in four bedrooms, I think it's easier that way. So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Six yeas?
That'd be the end of the agenda.